Forward, I want you to know I do appreciate the working relationship that we do have with you guys. Appreciate everything that you guys do. The questions I have, and I agree with the county road part, the one being in question, of course, Curran. But I guess my going forward with my mindset is we're possibly taking money away from the private sector in some of what we're doing here. It's right now you currently maintain a lot of your roads for the IDIQ process. Do you know what it is per mile that they're, the current going rate?
I don't have the current.
Approximately?
I could wing a number, but it'd be a wing. I, I, I wouldn't be comfortable winging one out.
I'm pretty sure it's over six hundred a mile.
Yeah.
And that's what we're doing your roads for. And I understand, I don't realize a lot of this is working, you know, with you guys and everything. But I'm also representing all the taxpayers out here in the county that might be employed privately by doing this. And I understand IDIQ is not working real well in a lot of your maintenance programs. And, and without being sounding arrogant, I said that when you guys adopted that fifteen years ago, twelve. But so my opinion is I see where our engineer Brian is coming from. And like I said, I, I know we have a great working relationship with you guys and I don't want to burn any bridges there. But I seriously don't, I would like to get rid of Curran as on our maintenance schedule. We lose money when we do this, you know, we make it up maybe somewhere else a little bit. But that, that could be maybe as large enough, maybe that you could get that set out through a bidding process to the private sector. That's my opinion. And we continue to take sunlight and honor.
Madam Chair, I shouldn't even go here, but keep in mind, we're also doing the, not as part of this agreement, shared maintenance. But we do the snowmobile area up in Crandall, you know, which is really nothing to do with the county. But it's a joint agreement that we chip in and do our part, which we spend a lot of decent amount of time and money plowing that out. So I guess I'm trying to point out that we have a relationship to where it's in the public good to try to work together, to take care of some of these things that would be kind of costly to contract out else.
Yeah. And, and as far as the, the cost go, I would say it's more studious of us with the taxpayers ones to, to do maintenance through the cheapest or the best route possible rather than potentially through our IDIQ where we're paying more. It might be going towards a local contractor, but at least our IDIQ is three contractors. And only one of them is somewhat local of the area AAA. The others are either Pinedale or out of Idaho. So it's, it's not extremely local even through our IDIQ. And that's, that's about the only way we have to do maintenance.
Unless you went back to RFPs or IFBs or?
We could do purchase card type of work, but then we're stuck with a limit of twenty-five hundred dollars. And that, that basically just covers our mobilization for most people to get up there and maybe a little.
I understand. You know, at the local level, your, your hands are tied, but at the, on the district level, they can be changed.
Yeah.
And until they start realizing that they're going backwards, I don't know what's true.
Yeah.
And I hate to, you're stuck in the middle. I'm stuck in the middle.
Yeah, just quick question. Brian, now this, this is basically just the blanket agreement.
Yes.
And every year when we go through the renewal process, that's when you plug in a dollar figure?
Correct. And it's the fifteen thousand set. We do go ahead and keep track and we report the amount we spend too. And that's laid out in each annual renewal. And again, I didn't have a chance to go through that and look at that, but, but yeah, each year that would be revisited as part of the renewal. But the base agreement does include those three.
Right.
That we've always done.
I'm good.
If I was the Forest Service on their next hundred thousand dollar grant, I'd put a rider at the end of the contract saying you're going to do this road for free. So I think fifteen grand would bring a pretty good deal out of all the different grants that we go through this program. So I don't want to give you any ideas. There are ways of, you know, write it up right, probably get around it, but I think fifteen grand, let's get the money, fifteen grand. The deal, I think it's a pretty good deal.
Madam Chairperson, I'll move approve.
I'll second it.
I'm moving second to approve the agreement. Any further discussion? Do you have none of those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I think under this circumstance, I have to vote and I will vote in favor.
Yeah, you gotta, gotta have at least three.
Three in favor. Okay.
I'll give this back to you. Thanks both.
Well, I understand it's, it's a work in progress.
Thank you both for coming in. Appreciate it.
Both appreciate it. I'll get this back to you. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, Assistant Assistant Manager Frank Homersheim.
What I wanted to talk about, he asked us to look at where the rates for dumping a lot of the car plant. Excuse me, I think. Let me look at that a little bit.
Maybe you had that paper somewhere.
Yeah, it was pretty small. This is a paper that Brian put together that kind of summarizes high level or, I've heard the top, top box summarizes our current revenue and expenses that are detailed for a given year at and accept the nine dollar per cubic yard rate. And that rate's been a while in place for some time. I think, you know, we discussed last time that I think it was originally generated on the assumption that a yard of C and D weighs, weighed the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty pounds per cubic foot. There's some argument that you can make that C and D weighs can weigh anywhere from bat to thirteen hundred pounds per cubic. But, you know, an effort to try to get possibly a little bit closer to what we charge at the facilities where we are able to charge per ton rate because we have the ability to weigh at, I think as a conservative measure, Brian and I looked at it and we, we assigned a value of five hundred dollars per cubic, excuse me, five hundred pounds per cubic yard. Trener conversion. And that would equate to approximately eighteen dollars per yard. And that's where we came up with, or where Brian and I came up with the second proposal or the second box that details what the revenue and expenses would be if we raise the rate from the current value of nine dollars per cubic yard to twenty dollars per cubic yard. It's not a money-making facility. It's subsidized by the other Park County facilities.
Madam Chair. The, the race estimated here would not take into account what possibly could be. I know there's no way to quantify an exact number that may lose from out of state due to rate hike.
Yeah, I know. So the little conversations I've had with the people in the field when I've been out there at the Clark site, they were like their folks from Red Lodge in Balfour and, you know, their alternative is to go to Columbus or millions or the rates were significantly higher. So I don't, you're gonna have twenty dollars.
Don't think we'll lose much.
No.
I don't, I don't either. I just want to.
Like the truck that I was looking at, he had a truck and a trailer. And I said, well, would that cost you if you had to take that to Delanceys? And it was upwards. And I want to say it told me like a hundred forty or a hundred fifty dollars. We charged thirty-six at that nine dollar rate. So I mean, even if you doubled it, you know, it was seventy or eighty dollars, it would still be much cheaper.
And the second part of that is have we checked into it? Can we legally in any way charge more for non-resident out of state?
Other counties do that. We, that, that's can be done whether we want to do that or not, but it's, you're allowed to do that. It's a host fee. Casper does it. Billings does it. Billings charges in the, in the city limits a certain rate. They charge more for people out of the county and then they'll charge a all different rate, higher rate for people out of state.
I would like to consider that simply because if we're going to lose money a little bit to provide this service out there, unless we can, the more cost we can put on the non-residents that aren't, don't contribute in any way of our county should be explored, you know? So.
Yeah, we're more than willing to, you know, adjust, you know, whatever your, you know, whatever recommendations you have. And I mean, really, that's, that's what it is right now. And it's kind of, you know, back in the envelope kind of, yeah, well, what do, what do you think is fair? What, what would you consider? What do you think is appropriate?
Well, that's, I think, why we're here today. And so I, my suggestion, what I'm at is just throwing numbers out. If we went for the proposal of twenty per yard for the residents and double that for the non-residents. I mean, these numbers are going to change and what we'll end up with. Well, it's, I still don't think that's going to probably get us back to even, but it may, it may get us closer.
No, without a doubt, I, you know, because I think the bulk or, you know, is based on, you know, impromptu survey out there. I think the bulk of the C and D waste or the majority, or better majority of it comes from out of state. So, and it's primarily the smaller bag, trash, and less your volume to the people that locally from Park.
I guess that would be my suggestion if we're going to take any type of action. I can put it in the form of a motion, but I'd like to discuss it.
Is there a, how do you determine if you're out of state? Is there a form they fill or is there license?
Well, you know, of course, the, the folks that have like set up on, you know, billing that, you know, where they can charge it. We, we know where those are, but you know, the other, you know, tell, tell side is, is the license.
Montana license.
Yeah, the license. You know, it's so much cheaper to license a vehicle in Montana. You're not gonna, you're not gonna, or you may live in Wyoming and try to license it in Montana. I'm sure there's some folks who do that. So, you know, that, that may be a burden, that, an argument that they have in the field.
I, I would suggest go strictly on plates. Let me think. If a Wyoming resident shows up with a Montana vehicle license to them, then they should consider maybe license in Wyoming or pay the out-of-state rate for, for the landfill.
You mentioned some continually builder or whatever. Are those all Wyoming companies that have given you a?
I can't, you know, I can't tell you that. You know, I don't know if, you know, I'm assuming some of the larger, you know, the folks, you know, the renovators, the contractors out there probably have something set up, but I, I don't know that for a fact.
We can check on that.
Yeah.
What are you, what are you looking at me for?
I want to know if I'm, before I make a motion.
No, I tell you, the only comment that I have, just taking this at face value, if we raise the rates, we're still losing money. So why are we doing it?
You'd have to go to forty dollars across the board to break even.
Yeah. And if, and if we do that, we're probably gonna lose more than half the business anyway. Oh, I think we need to look long and hard about closing it and run some type of, you know, membership roll-off like we have up in Sunline Basin.
I'm not against that, Commissioner Childen. However, I, I would like to do a trial basis, say three, six months and see what this comes in by raising it to twenty, with the exception of out-of-state plates being at forty and see where we're at. Because there's other things that we can do. We're also manning this landfill three days a week. We may be able to drop it back to two days and, and we may start breaking even in sort of services still available out there. You know, we haven't used that into the equation. So until we know what these numbers actually do, and I think after a six-month period, we would have a better idea without just flat out closing it.
Are you gonna include that in your motion, the time, time limit?
I can be more than happy to.
If, if you would do that, it would make it more palatable to me.
Also, Mr. Chairman, if we could, as Commissioner Teal can attest to, the folks down at Clark, we're gonna get a lot of calls and, and whatnot on all this. We would recommend if you do put it in place, we're talking what July one, you know, give them a little bit of time. We're gonna have to have a little public outreach on it because we, we will catch some heat about it.
Yeah, but to me, as far as the general public is concerned, and I guess I'll have to see what you say to this, but construction demolition type of stuff, very little of that that comes in is locally generated. Is that true? So, so we're really talking about is a solid, solid waste, which Keel's taking care of. And we continue to have a contract with them with some type of the rule of, I don't, you know, I don't think the construction demolition business is very, is very in great demand at Clark.
Well, you know, if we go that route, I mean, someone else considers, I think Keel does service the area. So, I mean, if, if they're providing a service for the area for house by house pickup, do we even need a transfer station? Just the folks can contract with them directly versus having this staging area.
Yeah. Well, I mean, when we originally, a number of years back, when we decided to close Clark to MSW, and that was a big topic of conversation, well, we need something for the residents out there. That's why we started doing it. And, you know, if it gets to the point where the, the residents don't use the facility, we'll close it all.
I'm just saying that, you know, we do this up in Crandall because there is no service available, available up in Crandall to pick up trash. Services are needed. I assume that Keel services the Clark area and others would as well, you know, if the opportunity presented itself. And we don't want to subsidize any of it. It's an option.
This, I wonder where the breaking point is between people starting to dump in places that we don't want them to dump if we don't give them an opportunity of some kind. Which I understand with Keel. Just take that thought. Sorry.
So with that, Madam Chair, I move we approve a rate increase for the Clark landfill from twenty dollar per cubic yard to twenty dollars per cubic yard for Wyoming residents and forty for non-resident, non-Wyoming plate, Park County plate vehicles to take effect July one for a six-month trial period.
I'll second.
Okay.
Six months, you said?
One, one question, conversation. You think that six months, six months enough time to see a trend?
Get some seasonal things in there.
Yeah, so yeah, likely have your usage will be in the six months and maybe later usage in the fall and winter.
Also, Miss, Miss Madam Chairperson, Madam Chairperson, we could also during that time, we could kind of tighten up tracking, whether it's out of state or local actually use the C and D area. We can use that time as a little bit of a survey and, and come back to you with, is it the people in Clark that need the C and D landfill or the out-of-state folks? So I, I think we can do more to track that.
Okay. Well, you know, I mean, the way this, don't mind, the way this conversation first started is we found ourselves in a position where basically we're subsidizing out-of-state people. And I don't mind subsidizing Park County residents to a certain extent. But when, you know, it's costing us money so people from Montana can do business, that's wrong.
Disagree.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to go from nine to twenty for residents and forty for out-of-state starting July one for a six-month trial period. Is that your motion? Any further discussion? Do you have none of those in favor?
Aye. While we have landfill here, can we discuss rates of the lagoons?
Yes.
It is part of your enterprise. I believe we've all, if I could continue, we've all received estimate, basically to the best knowledge of our survey by Travis, the A. And we're obviously well under what the going rate should be for the area. Rather than kick the can down the road more until we come up with a long-term fix, I would like to suggest raising the rate at the lagoons from a per-load charge to a per-thousand charge. It's still going to have to be used somewhat as an honor system. We can give the services plenty of time to work this into their customers so they are, and or contracts that they may have so that they don't, we don't put hurt to them, but they can pass that along. At any rate, it's going to have to be somewhat of an honor system. They assign in when they dump, I believe correctly, as a trouble with the truck number and company. And that truck is going to be based on a full load. If you have a thousand gallon truck and that's a thousand, if it's a three thousand truck, you know that truck every time is a three thousand gallon truck. If they want to dump half load, that's on them, not us. So, and I don't think they're spending a lot of time coming over there with half loads. However, so with that, looking at what Travis has come up with, I think we need to be sixty dollar per thousand to get us in the, in the ballpark until we come up with a long-term solution. We are going to be running out of space and we know we're losing money right now. So in, I, I've opened this up for discussion. Nobody agrees with me, then we can maybe table it, but I would, I could discuss.
I mean. The only thing I would say about the sixty dollars per thousand versus, I think, in our discussion with Brian and myself and Sandy, I'll maybe sixty dollars per load for the large trucks and maybe a figure of twenty-five or twenty for a small truck. Just because it is on our system. And we don't have, I know, I can tell by the, by the camera, you know, a large truck from a small truck, but I can't tell. I don't have an inventory of all the different trucks and what the, what the actual capacities are of them.
Would, would it help if we ask the trucks that services that to have a number on the side of their truck? It would be visible from the cameras area when they're offloading?
Yeah, no, my trouble is, is actually trying to get a clear. So it's just like a game camera that we're gonna have out there right now to take pictures and, you know, and sometimes you get just a picture of the bumper. Sometimes it's the, the back of the trucks. And so it's not, it's not consistent. And I've tried moving the camera in a number of different ways, you know, unfortunately, you know, it's just a local, local deal. So just download it to a local flash drive. I haven't had much success in trying to repetitively, you know, capture the same image. And I can't tell, you know, for the most part, I can tell based on, you know, what the truck looks like and the log, if it's a Keel truck or an Iverson truck. And most of the times I can tell if it's, of course, a big truck or a little truck. It's really, it'd be really difficult to try to capture repetitively, you know, a truck and number and.
But until we get a metering system, we have to start somewhere. So that's, I guess, my suggestion is just based more on volume than load, using the thousand gallon per price.
Madam Chair, I, I was just gonna say, the more I've thought about it too, we do track with that log, you know, whether it be small or big, but they, they are putting down three hundred, five hundred, two thousand, three thousand gallons. So it's kind of an honor system now. And I think we could, I think we could maintain that and, and still do that. I would like, I don't know if Leslie would like to.
I was gonna ask if they'd like to have a little bit of input into the discussion. Since we brought it up and we're going there today, what, what are your thoughts?
Just a couple of questions on more along the lines of when there's fire season and whatnot, that we are offloading multiple loads for fire. We can't always do full loads. They're not always full loads. And it's just a turnaround where the sixty dollars per load, we want to be empty at all times. Rather it's two hundred gallons because it's the last little bit or three thousand. Just a thought there. Also, with the gallons and the thousand gallon, if it's a five hundred gallon porta potty truck, is that, is the sixty dollars going to be minimum? Or will it be a reduction? Or, you know, things of those na, that nature, which there again would affect the larger why, you know, projects that are in place with fire and whatnot.
Yeah, she kind of built on what I was gonna, or actually did what I was gonna say, and that is we put more partial loads in there than we put full loads. Because if you got, say you got a subject of more ports and then you got one in Powell, not knowing what might call in, we'll come out of port for it. No, go to Powell empty. So we might only have fifteen hundred gallons on that truck when we dump. Because if we go to Powell, we know we're gonna get one. And with businesses, we might get three before we get back to the dump site. So, you know, like I, it's more, it's more support to me that we, like you guys, we dump more partial loads.
With that said, that would go more toward what you were saying with the per thousand, put a per thousand price on it with the honor system as far as the per thousand than worrying about small truck, big truck.
Right. And do you want to, would it be five hundred for?
Well, Madam Chair, you know, I haven't made a motion yet because I wanted to see what everybody's input here first. So, you know, we're already on our system right now, but we, we, we do know from the engineers that we're losing our putt. So I don't care how we do it. I'm totally fine with just allowing the, the people, the services to put down the, the estimated gallon each. If it's a half load, I mean, you guys are gonna know whether you got three hundred gallons or five hundred gallons. And basically it comes out to about sixteen dollars and sixty cents per, per gallon. Is that right? No. I got it by, by per hundred, per hundred. So, I mean, if you would rather do a per hundred weight or hundred gallon, I mean, and say seventeen dollars per hundred or whatever, but somewhere in that, to get it in that neighborhood of fifteen, I, I'm open for whatever works best for them and doesn't, if doesn't cause too much trouble. So we can continue the relationship and the service that we provide for Park County, but I don't think that we need to be subsidizing it with other things.
Yeah, I got a number of questions. There are a lot more questions than the answers here. And I'm gonna kind of talk to them. Thank you. I guess I'm in trouble a lot, but actually, how much are we charging now per load?
Right now, it's twenty dollars for a large truck and five for a small.
Okay.
And that started in two thousand sixteen. Ponds have been there since nineteen seventy-two. And up until that time, it was a free service.
Right, exactly. But we, we really don't have a handle on what our day-to-day operating expenses are, do we?
Other than so far this year, I've spent, you know, it's close to twenty-five thousand dollars between my time and contractor maintenance kinds of things.
Okay. And, and on an average year, what's your total revenue coming in?
I couldn't tell you that. You know, I'm guessing, I know the report I just read earlier today said that in two thousand sixteen, we had roughly fifteen hundred and fifty loads, but it didn't separate it out between small and large. The last, the first two weeks of this month, we had seventy-four loads. So, you know, call it a hundred and fifty for, for the, where I'm tracked for this month is a hundred.
Okay. Well, I, I guess where I'm going with my thought process here is we're, we're in, in a process now formulating pretty much a long-range plan and a short-term solution to our problems we have right now. Because up until a couple of years ago, we didn't even know we had a problem out there. When I first became a commissioner, it was a free service. Really wasn't costing us anything. Why the hell do I go down there a couple, three times a week and, you know, and everything was functioning okay? And he could get the water turned in and all of that. And then started getting a few more problems. We started spending a little more money. So then we said, okay, we're gonna start charging the fee. And that fee was pretty much plucked out of thin air. And I think at this point in time, until we do actually formulate two plans, actually, one short-term, take care of our short-term problems and a long-term solution to our big problem out there, I think raising the rates at this time is relatively premature. Because once again, I think we'd just be throwing a dart at the board someplace and wherever it sticks, that's what we're gonna charge. And so in order for me to vote for an increase, I guess, I need some justification for that increase. And I, and I do believe the meeting we had downstairs that day, you know, and I think I made a comment, we got two problems. We got our short, short-term problem is what are we gonna do to address the emergency situation we're in right now? Now EA is hopefully getting a handle on that because I think our volumes were way off from that meeting down there. But we need to come up with a long-term solution to the problem because it's gonna do nothing but get worse and worse. So I just, I just think it's a little premature. That's all.
Madam Chair, did you see the report that we received from Brian on, from Travis on the CPG? What more do you need to know that you're losing your putt? And that's where we need to be. He's saying seventy-five, I'm complimenting. to be. He's saying seventy-five, I'm compromising, compromising at sixty per thousand.
Well, well, I understand that, but that, those are guests on his part. I mean, there's, there's nothing carved in stone. I just ask the question, what are our expenses? We don't really know. Twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars a year. What are our revenues?
Fifteen, fifteen, based on the number of loads that we just received, fifteen hundred loads and on the average of ten dollar per load, you're, you're receiving about fifteen thousand total revenue.
Okay. It's costing us somewhere between eight and ten thousand dollars, did you?
You receive more than that from us? Just from the one, you receive more than that just from us? Just?
Well, Madam Chair, I, I've just, we've talked about this, I think, from the day I became a commissioner. Two and a half years later, we're still charging the same damn thing and losing more every day. So the sooner we at least get something to where we can keep above head. I don't want to spend a bunch of money on a study to find out, spend ten thousand dollars on a study to save a thousand. I mean, it's, it's pretty apparent we're losing.
Still want to lose your thought there, but, you know, this, this situation's similar to what we went through on the landfills, if you remember that, that we were here and with, with the numbers were all over the place. We were a hundred, a hundred fourteen, a hundred twenty dollars a ton. And what we did at that time was we took kind of a partial step. We knew that we had big capital costs in front of us, which we're gonna have here. We're gonna have to at least do what Thermoop did, which is, what do you call it? Muffin muncher and, you know, and, and maybe possibly card lock. There's things that we're gonna have to do that's capital expenditures, possibly another pond, some pretreatment for Cody. We don't know what that is. We just know it's gonna be, you know, pretty costly. So I think what Commissioner Teal, not that I like to agree with him, but there is, there is, there is, I guess, some precedence there that we know that we're gonna need a significant amount of revenue, whether we get help from the state through clean water, you know, clean water SRF or something. We're gonna need some money to, to finance those capital improvements. So, and, and I don't, I think, based on what, like Thermoop's charging to, to cover theirs, I, I think that's a good go-by. I, I could be convinced either way, you know, we should have that report from EA, a matter of, you know, a month, a couple of months here, hopefully.
Well, you know, Brian, I guess, my, my thinking is, we did go through this with the landfill. And when we lowered our tipping fees to where we thought we were pretty much at a break-even point, and then we lowered them even further. And I argued in opposition to that. I said, I think it's premature. And now we're talking about the possibility of raising our tipping fees. And I, I agree with Lloyd that something needs to be done out there. I don't think we're getting enough money out there for the service we're providing. But I, I just think it's premature to reach out in thin air and pretty much pull a number out, when a year from now, when we get the, the final study and we have a long-term plan as how we're gonna fix our problem out there. And we've got to go either down or up, or I just think it's premature. That's all. Until we have, have the facts to actually make an educated guess what we need to charge. That's all.
The other thing that might come into play if we're talking about SRF or, or state funding in any format, is the conversation that the state used to have with me on occasions with the water district and stuff, is if you're not helping yourself, why would we help you with grant money? And thinking about knowing that we're undercharging, I mean, knowing that we're not doing, I'm not saying go this whole route, but I think we need to make some sort of step in the right direction to start to offset some of those costs we have. I guess I have a question for the contractors, as far as, how far in advance do you do some of your contracts for these things? How, I mean, if, if you commit to the Forest Service, is it on January one, or is it on July one? Or can you change your rates throughout the year if we do these things?
So for the contrast with the state and the Forest Service, just like with you guys, we've got the first year and three additional years or four additional years.
Okay.
That pricing doesn't change. We can opt not to continue the contract and it will go out for bid. So it would be through at least twenty twenty-one for whoever has contracts. And some of those contracts start odd-year, like May, April, just depending on who it's with.
So if I understood what you just said, if we change this to where you're at with ten or ten dollars or twenty dollars, and we went to sixty dollars, and we said July one, you've got a year potentially left on contracts that you can't change?
Correct.
So, interesting. Okay. Great.
Did I, did I hear you right, that you have the option to negate the contract? If you tried, if you wanted to pass on the?
After the, after that year is complete, then we do not have to extend.
So are some of the years, some of the contracts in their initial year?
Yes. And they're all, it, it, it's not like April first. They're all different depending on what entity.
Okay. So my question then is to Leslie. I'm, I'm fixing to make a motion here based on six dollars per hundred on an honor system. If we were, if, if we were to, if I were to make a motion, that were to pass at six dollars per hundred, based on honor system, effective July first, for any, for all services except for your contract ones, how difficult would that be for you to track? Meaning, therefore, meaning, when your contracts are renewed, you change to this, six, the, the updated version. How difficult would that be? Or could it be done?
July and August would be an absolute nightmare.
I don't know. I don't know how we track.
That would be hard for us to track.
Yeah, I guess you know what certain truck is for that car. I don't know how you track that.
Well, in the interest of time, and we're getting over our other times on things, we said we discussed this today. I don't know that we're at a point where anybody's gonna make a motion at this point.
Well, he is.
Well, he's mentioned it a time or two, but I'm, do we want to, do we want to wait a little bit longer, gather a little more after the thoughts that have been spread today and, and understanding what the contractor has to say and have another discussion about this?
I guess I can put this in a motion, Madam Chair, and find out your, your feelings.
You can put it in a motion.
Madam Chair, and I move that we raise our lagoon prices to six dollars per hundred, starting effect of January one, two thousand twenty-two. And you guys figure out how to, how to implement that.
Do I have a second?
Maybe not.
Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Okay. So the topic's not gone. It's just a matter of, of more discussion and a little bit more on the study and knowing the ins and outs, a little bit better of what we're dealing with. So I'll go to Chairman Livingston.
Chairperson, if we could also find out about metering system, what would it take to self-automate the lagoon out there, if it's all possible, the cost of all of it?
I think that's part of, that's all part of EA's scoping study, one of the things they look at.
Because that could be a solution to a lot of it.
That was one of the.
Whether to make it, we could also make it into a subdivision and sell it.
You know, so they were suggesting that they're gonna look at those kinds of things at the, you know, and, you know, can you use this facility versus somehow go?
Look at the same things where, like, we're looking at Baver's, do they break down? Which, what are the best ones? How can we implement this the easiest and make it easier for these people to check in with their little card and, and it will measure exactly what they're having. So they're getting a fair price for their product. And, and we're getting a fair price in the meantime.
The good thing is there's a lot of these out there that we can look at. We're not the first one to do it, so.
The only, the only caveat I'll offer to that is Washtenaw County did that. And now they get like two trucks a week. They figured out somewhere else to go. Right, wrong, or indifferent. I mean, and maybe that's a discussion we need to have.
That's always a problem we get. It's with, with your job at the landfill too. I mean, there's a tipping point with a tipping fee. Some people will say it's too much, and then they'll come up with their own solutions, which we have to always watch for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Oh, I, I just wanted everybody to know you're talking about a hundred dollars per subject. That the rate will increase.
It could.
Thank you.
Susan, you want to say?
See, that's why we had the discussion after lunch. Once you start talking poo, you just.